All right, welcome everyone. Let's all stand for the pleasure allegiance, please. My pleasure allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, please remain standing for a moment of silence for support of all our men and women proudly serving our country. Thank you. All right, so we'll get right to announcements. Just want to announce, we had an executive session prior to the meeting. We discussed some litigation, real estate, and personnel issues. Okay, I also want to acknowledge former township supervisor Stanley P. Gao or Gaoel, used to be a supervisor here from 1978 through 1984. Our condolences go to his family, he passed away recently, and again, our condolences to the family. All right, Janice, you're up.
I'd like to thank everybody that took time out of their nice hot day to come out in the heat to come to the township meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody that's online, hope that everybody's tuned in and enjoying their air conditioning. Make sure you check on your senior adult neighbors in your, on your street to make sure that they're okay, because in this hot summer months, a lot of them tend to forget the air conditioning and that kind of stuff, so just check in on them, please, and watch out for the kids. Thank you.
Sure.
I get no announcements this time, thank you.
Judy?
Hi, everybody. I got a couple of things from the Warminster Library. One of them is an author talk and signing that's coming up on the 23rd of July, next week, 2025. The author is Gloria Brown Marshall, and she's going to be there in person, and her book will be on sale behind the counter when she's there, and she'll be there to talk to people and answer questions. And aside from all the wonderful, I have a few flyers up here if anybody wants one. And our, our, summer events are numerous, you can check the Warminster Library website for that. There's a lot of reading events, both adult and children, outside events, all kinds of events. And then there's on the second of, I'm sorry, I gotta make sure of the date of this one. In August, August 2nd, I believe it is, we're having a, an open house with all kinds of authors that are from this area, not expecting so many authors, real authors that have been published, to be in this area. We've got over 50 requests for a table. We have about 30 authors coming, and they'll all be sitting all around, all around the library, ready to answer your questions and answer people who want to know how to get started writing and how to get started to publish their own book. They'll be able to talk to you, and they'll probably have some books for sale, too. So it sounds like a fun day, especially in the hot summer, so come one and all.
What time is that on Sunday?
Now, I think, let me just make sure of the date here. Sorry, I thought I had it written down here. It's all August 2nd at 1:00, 1:00 to 4:00, August 2nd.
That's a nice event.
You'll meet all genius people that write a book in this neighborhood.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those at home, those who are here tonight. I have an announcement for our Parks and Recreation Department. September 27th will be our Warminster Day, which is a lot of fun for the whole family, so please try to join us. And then I also, I wanted to mention about our road program. It's amazing, I mean, our roads on Centennial and the neighborhood, it was the first time it's been paved, I guess we lived there, and it's wonderful, wonderful job. I have to thank Morrisio, and I give a big shout out to them for doing a phenomenal job. And that's it, Mr. Trump.
Thanks, Kath. One thing I do want to mention, our last meeting, we had some really heavy weather come through, and our power went out, and our backup generator was overheating, and I want to give a big shout out to Gene and our Public Works and everyone that had the power come on and off about 20 times while we had, so we could finish the meeting. It wasn't announced, I mean, it wasn't broadcast because of the power outages, but, you know, our Public Works people did a phenomenal job to keep things going so we could finish the meeting. So a shout out to Gene and the Public Works people. Okay. No presentations tonight, we'll go right to land use matters, public hearings and ordinances, and we consider approval of 675 East Street Road, Glenett Bucks, for preliminary final plan, SALDO application. I'll hand it over to Mr. Kennard.
I believe their attorney's here tonight, and I think, based on what the chairman and I discussed along with the township solicitor, I don't think we need a full-blown presentation tonight. I think you've had some discussions with my office and also the solicitor's office, so if you just want to spend a minute just describing your project, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. So just for the record, my name is Leonard Altieri. I'm an associate at the law firm of Claire Harrison, Harvey Brandtberg in Center City, Philadelphia, representing the property owner for the application this evening. So again, as was announced, this is the Glenett Bucks, which is located at 675 East Street Road. The Glenett Bucks, as we all know, is an apartment complex combined with the different parcels that it has, it's around 30.54 acres, and it contains around 390 multifamily dwelling units. What my client is proposing to do is to construct a 5,000-square-foot fitness center and leasing office building with 15 parking spaces. We had gone before the zoning hearing board, that took place on October 10th of 2024, where we received the requested relief that we needed with regards to zoning, and tonight we're here for the final land development approval. I have been in touch with the solicitor's office with regards to the draft resolution. We do have a copy of the draft resolution. Mr. Holbert and I were going back and forth. There is one more addition that we need to make on there with regard to the waivers, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to grab you ahead of time. There's one waiver that is missing on there, specifically it is, and we noticed this when we walked into the, into the meeting room, it's 22-520CAP3. It is number two under a stormwater management ordinance from the Gilmore Review Letter dated July 9, 2025. Gilmore doesn't have any objection to it, it has to do with a minimum grade of 2% shall be maintained for all areas where sheet flow occurs, and 1% for all areas where channel flow occurs in the basin. That's the only, it was just, I think, just, it was just chopped off on that.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
That's okay.
That's fine, we're fine with that. You're also okay with the, the fee in lieu? The amount is $27,500?
That's correct.
You're prepared to sign that tonight with that, with that slight change?
Yeah, I mean, well, I, I, either I will sign it or my client will sign it, I mean, we're good to sign this, I just, I don't know whether I.
Okay, so supervisor action is in order.
And with that, that is the presentation. I do have the engineer if there's any specific questions. But I thank everybody for the time.
No, we don't, I don't, we don't have any, any questions other than, I just want to thank, we've thanked your staff, we've, you guys have spent some time on this, so, you know, I'm glad to see you get to the finish line. As Mr. Flager said, your resolution's ready for approval tonight.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? You're okay with the, with the percent grade for the sheet flow?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? All right, being done, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Come on up. How are you, Nicole?
How's everyone doing? Hello.
Surviving the heat?
Yeah, I know, right? Happy summer. Nicole Renier is a tax collector. Just have a few announcements from the tax office, starting with an update on our payments. Out of the 10,437 bills mailed out, as of today, we've received 10,130 payments, so there's 307 remaining, so we're getting there. Thank you so much to everyone that's paid so far, and for anyone who's not yet paid, please feel free to reach out if you do have any questions. We are in the penalty period for that, which started in July, on July 1st, and goes till the end of the year, December 31st. After that, that's when the liens get put on the property, which we want to avoid that, so again, if anyone has questions, please feel free to reach out to our office. The senior trash rebates are also available, the $55. Just want to send a reminder of the criteria for that. At least one person on the deed needs to be 62 years or older in the year 2025, so even if your birthday is in September, you're still eligible if you turn 62. The property needs to be your home, your primary residence, and there has to be refuse on your bill, because it is a trash discount, it's off of the refuse portion on the bill. As was mentioned, too, we're proud that now the 100% disabled veterans are included in that, and it was also mentioned that the township will be sending out a letter to all the eligible veterans, and our office will be processing those rebates, so if any questions, again, feel free to reach out about that. The school district property tax bills, which I know everybody's excited about, just recently went out last week, there was a delay on that because the school board didn't pass their budget until July 2nd, so everything's pushed back about two weeks. So the discount due date is now September 15th instead of the end of August. The face amount is due on November 14th, and then on November 15th is when the penalty period begins. We're also working on dates to visit Centennial Station, Five Ponds, to accommodate the residents in those communities, and we're happy to accommodate elsewhere, so if there is anywhere else, please feel free to reach out to our office, we're happy to coordinate that. As a reminder, too, our phone number is 215-443-8282. Email is taxcollector, all one word, at warminsterpa.org. Website is warminstertaxcollector.com. And then we are on social media, too, Facebook and Instagram, backslash Warminster Tax Collector. So that's everything I have for tonight, so thanks so much again, and hope everybody has a great summer and stays cool.
Thanks, Nicole. So Nicole, before you go.
Doing a great job.
So for the disabled veterans, we passed that ordinance last week, last month, wasn't, now, we will be sending out a letter from the township explaining that, but just so everyone's clear, you have to meet the state requirements for that rebate, correct?
Right, so it's for the 100% property tax exempt veterans.
Yes, people that are eligible for that are also eligible for the trash.
Correct, yes. And again, if there's any questions, people can reach out, we can walk through that, and even for people that may be interested in that program to find out more, that's done at a county level with that approval process, and we're happy to pass along that information as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I'm Don Wilson, I live at 556 Olive Street, and I'm coming here because I don't know where to go start with this. Altos is in front of my house, and he had a generator, compressor, refrigerator truck running for two months straight, nonstop, which broke the ordinance, and nobody did nothing about it. And I want to make sure it doesn't happen again, because you guys heard that generator at the last meeting, and that's what it sounds like in my house. I'm 50 feet from his, his compressor, and the police came out there, they told me, "We would get a ticket if we cut our grass on Sunday." How does he get away with it? Because he pays taxes, I mean, so do I, like, and then, so I went around and I got a petition, and they said, "Well, it's not going to do no good." No, but what the petition shows basically is that it's a nuisance. Like, five houses down has trees, and he could still hear it. So I need to figure out if he's going to get another permit, because when you go to LNI, what they tell me is, "Oh, well, we don't need to be notified if he applies for a permit," right? So the problem is, he's going to make noise, but he gets cleared for it, it doesn't make sense.
Well, I don't know, I don't, when was the last time that generator was there?
January 8th it shut off. And I was here December, the first week in December, and I was told, "Oh, it'll be taken care of." It wasn't. I dealt with Christmas with that thing running, Thanksgiving, New Year's Day, and it's going to happen again, because Altonmontes runs the same compressor at their place, because me and my wife took a walk, and they're running the same thing. Basically, he had some kind of a factory on Murns, he was making something, and he's a bakery, I understand it, but we got trapped, our trailers coming in there all day, like, he's a factory now, like, he's, like, I want to make sure that this compressor's not going on. Because my boy's got PTSD, and it's driving us crazy, like, she had to go to the doctors to get medicine so she could sleep, like, we shouldn't have to do that, and I just know he's going to bring it back. So I wanted to figure out what I have to do, because they're telling me license inspection will just give to him, but we're never notified.
Well, that's not necessarily true. I don't know who told you that.
License inspection.
They shouldn't have told you that. They should not have told you.
Well, you know what they also told me? I need to stop harassing them, but they all enjoyed a nice quiet holiday, three holidays in a row.
Yeah, well. We'll have our, our staff and our solicitor and engineer look into that for you. Well, I, I understand your, your.
Yeah. Well, they said they went out there with a decibel reading, but no noise, doesn't need a decibel reading, zero. Like, there, there shouldn't be nothing going on.
Excuse me, so you, so that was what you were saying, they violated, was the noise ordinance?
Yes.
And they did go out and measure it?
They said they did, but when you look up.
That's what I would recommend.
When they go out there, when you look up your organs, it doesn't say anything about, like, there's got to be a certain decibel reading, zero is zero. I was told by several police.
It shouldn't be zero.
It shouldn't be zero.
Because like, I just had.
I mean, traffic going down the street is.
It should be around eight.
If I played it on my phone, you guys would be like, "There's no way."
Yeah, I'm not disagree, I'm not.
No, we're.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to know what I can do to figure this out, because LNI just gives them the permit. We're never notified if it's going to make noise.
That's the other thing, like, unless you go on the zoning hearing board, the adjacent properties are not required to be notified of a permit for one property. If it involves zoning relief, then yes, but just a permit, the neighbors are not notified for a permit.
Exactly, so.
But that's in any municipality.
Yeah, but I understand it, but the thing is, is when it's in 50 feet of my house.
There's no, they don't, that's not the law, the law, it's only for that property, so that, you're never going to be notified of any permits of your neighbors.
We're not going to be notified.
For a shed, for a new, no.
But when the police say it's breaking it, what happens?
That's different, then, and they did what I would recommend was to have the noise, the decibel reading, and I'm assuming it was not zero, I'm assuming it was probably 60 to 80 to 100. Other townships have about 80 as the threshold, I don't know what this, I don't deal with that here, LNI does, but they could, they could go out again and measure that.
There's things we can do.
And there is a noise, there is a nuisance, you're right, there's a nuisance, but. What?
Well, I'm going to, Tom, you want to?
LNI can look into that.
Yeah, they run it 24 hours, seven days a week.
And it's just in the winter?
Yeah.
Thanksgiving through New Year's, right? Thanksgiving through New Year's?
Yeah.
Tom, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I think, if I remember correctly, that seemed like it was a while ago. Was that?
Yeah.
Before the Eagles won a Super Bowl, I can't remember anything before that.
I understand. They were working their way towards it at that point.
Thank you, yes, I believe you're correct. I, I think that the, LNI was talking to the, to Lisa Howdyshell, our assistant manager, on how they could better handle this if it, if they could ask for this permit again. Like, just as an example, would they, would they find a better place for it, maybe closer to the street road? Would they be able to, you know, just say, "Look, you know, you, you, this is a defacto expansion of the building, and you may have to get additional approvals other than just a permit." So, but I don't know what those discussions, I think they happened like in February after the thing went away. I don't think they've been talking about it recently. Well, I can, I can have that conversation, we can put back to the board at the next meeting.
That'd be fine.
That's fine, we can do that. Because we still have a little bit, still have a little while.
We'll, we'll check it out, there's things we can do, and, you know, and, it's, it's a chiller box, right? It's a, it's a box that has a, a chiller, you know.
Yeah, fan on, which, that makes noise, but that's not the problem.
Yeah, reefer, yeah, yeah.
It's when the compressor turns on.
Right.
And he put, like, all these skids in front of it.
Yeah, I heard that, but that was a fire prob, that has.
Yeah, and then he had, then he texted me saying, "Your complaint was this, I had to take down it." I said, "You put up a fence, like, sound goes right through holes," like, what was he talking about?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll look into it. You want to give Jill your name and all, maybe we can reach out once we get some sort of, once we figure out what's going on?
Yeah, I could, whatever you.
Or you can do it now if you like.
Can I ask a question? The property that they own over on York Road, they have a, a trailer in the back that has the compressor also, is there changes that were made to that one so it's not as noisy for the, the residents that live on that street?
No idea.
I don't know, where is it?
It's Altonmontes, it's, it's right on York.
Behind the strip center?
Yeah, they put it out back.
Yeah, it's out back, and maybe there's just enough buffer.
I don't know, I'm just curious, I mean, if they did something to that one, maybe they could do the same.
They run it in the summer?
They run it year-round, yeah, on overground.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll, we'll have, we'll have, we'll look into it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if they did something to that one years ago and they put it out there, then maybe they could just do the same thing.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. All right, anybody else? Here we go. Okay, consent agenda, let's consider approval of the Board of Supervisors' minutes, meeting minutes dated June 19, 2025. Consider the memorandum of understanding between the Police Department of Warminster Township, Warrington Township, Warwick Township, and County of Bucks Human Services Division, Human Services Co-Responder Initiative. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? From the public? Let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, where are we going here? Finance report. Mr. Haybuck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to consider the bill listed June 30th in the amount of $1,018,288.90, and a supplemental bill listed July 17th in the amount of $895,555.36, with a total of
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, being done, any questions or comments from the public? Let's call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. John, you're up.
All right, I'll be really quick this month, just because.
That helps.
So revenue-wise, we're at 60% of budget. Last year, we were at 62%, so we're pretty much tracking like normal. The good news is, I specifically look at the transfer tax a lot, because that says what's happening within the township, people, property selling. We're about $40,000 ahead of last year, so that's looking really good. I, I saw months of like very small reports of like only nine properties being sold. We're back up to three pages, which is usual, so we're, we're actually looking good at like the activity that's going on, and people wanting to come into Warminster. On the expense side, we're at 34% of budget, and expense, and last year we were at 33. Expenses are pretty stable throughout the year, being that we're at 41.67% of the year. To be only at 34% of the budget, we're looking pretty good.
So we'd like to hear, John.
Yeah, like, everything's tracking the way it should and looking good, so.
Spending's down, revenues are up, that's what we like to hear.
Yep.
Thank you, John.
Got all the credit, John.
No problem.
All right, move on, finished business, new business, I think we have our police chief, Jim Donnelly, who's going to do a little discussion about our traffic studies, methods and goals. Jim, floor's yours.
Evening. As you know, traffic's a huge problem in Warminster Township. It should only take me about 45 minutes to an hour to get through this.
Thanks, Joe.
And I get on with your night. But, yeah, traffic's a huge segment. The overall goal with traffic is one to bring awareness back to the operator of their vehicle, and making sure they know what they're doing, and to reduce accidents. When I took over in 2013, we had about 1,500 accidents a year. Last year, we had 1,100. So we're, we're having some effect, reducing the accidents, targeting certain places. One was that, was reducing the roads we focused on to about 11 roads, there were feet of roads to different intersections, we've increased that up to 14, and I'll, I'll get into why, and then I'll get into a couple other things. But 1,100 accidents last year, we're at 600 accidents so far this year, 147 are reportable, which means somebody was hurt, something was towed, it was a municipal vehicle or a mass transit vehicle that occurred. Another 396 were non-reportables, 78 were hit and runs. Right now, last year we rode, we had about 5,000 traffic stops, almost 5,100. Right now, we're about almost 2,400, so we're on par with that. Everything's tracking, we don't change a whole lot. The only thing that's up this year compared to last year, and I don't have the timeframe, but we had three fatalities last year, and we have three fatalities already as of January, July 1 this year. So our goal is to reduce those fatal somehow, someplace. The one we had was tragic on Newtown Road last year, that was kind of a, an offset one or usually, our fatalities usually run around, up around Street and Delmonte or Street and Newtown. Street and Newtown is because people cross the street in the middle of the block coming from the hotel to the 7-Eleven or the bar or the Aldi or something along that nature, or back and forth, it's dark because of the base used to be there. And then usually Delmonte or up that way, Cooper, is because of speed, because you have that long stretch between golf course, and if you hit the traffic light at Delmonte, you're going to hit the traffic light at St. David's in Cooper. That being said, good, couple good things that came out so far, we were able to hire and get up, our numbers were increased to 46. That allowed us to put one individual officer out. All he does is highway. He started Monday, doing, all he does is work day work and do traffic details and answer traffic complaints. There is a highway officer in each squad, they rotate around the clock and handle accidents, but he handles nothing but details. He was out on Phillips handling the Phillips complaint, we got a complaint the other night, yesterday, for Old York with some new construction out on New York, so he was out on two traffic details the last two days on Old York. He's been handling Henry Avenue, he was up on Delmonte, and he was on, oh, he just, we're doing his study down on Centennial right now. With that said, but the 14 roads we very, we focus on are Valley, Delmonte, Norristown, Henry, York, Centennial, Davisville, Jacksonville, Murns, Street, Log College, Ivy Lane, County Line Road, and Roberts. That's 14 streets, and he's going to be working through that along with the highway officers working daily in the squads to hit those streets, so we're going to increase the amount of traffic details and everything else we're doing. That being said, we're working with the school district, school district is supposed to be implementing Bus Patrol, if you're not familiar with Bus Patrol, Bus Patrol is cameras on the side of the school buses, because we get probably anywhere from five to 10 complaints from school buses every day about people passing buses in the arms and the kids, and the tragic accident you saw in Ben Salem about five, six years ago, where somebody sped this, Ben Salem Boulevard, and it killed young kids. So we're going to work with them on that. The other thing we have that the county implemented was Viper. Viper's countywide, it's on certain intersections, and it reads your tag, and it tells us whether it's, the registration's good, bad, stolen, the operators, things like that. So we have one at County Line in York, and we have, we're getting one at Street and Jack's. We'll have one probably at Bristol in York shortly, and one at Street in York. So we're looking to move towards that. The street signs and the radar detectors, what we have, that's where we're deficient, our equipment is rather old. I'm going to be talking to the manager about how, and Mr. Ramey about how we can work some of those things, but one of the big things that you've seen in my report over the last probably four months is red light cameras. There, I looked into red light cameras in 2016, the company couldn't answer my question, the one question I had was how long are we stuck with this, if we want to get rid of it? That was answered, the contract's seven years. So I went to Abington in 2016 and tried to get those up and running, they just couldn't answer the question. But that'll open us up to other grants that can help us replace and replenish our other equipment, our radar detectors, our signs, things like that, but I'd be looking to get things like that, but I'd be looking to get one at Street in York and one at Street and Jack's. Um, we would have a deal with that, uh, I could get, if we get to that, uh, process, cause right now they're a hot commodity, Lower Marion was just on the TV when I came in here. They're producing, they're, they're rolling theirs out. Warrington's had theirs for about six months, Ben Salem's had theirs for six months, Abington's had theirs for about four years, Middletown Falls, who else, or somebody else?
Philadelphia has them everywhere.
Well, Philadelphia's always having, I'd really like to get my hands on speed cameras. If I could get hands on speed cameras and put them in those stretches between Norristown and Delmont, and between Davisville Road and Newtown Road, we would probably see our fails go down. Cause they're the only two areas in the whole township that you can really open up, and they're hard to manage.
Right.
Are they very expensive?
Red light cameras, they, they pay for themselves.
Okay.
Red light cameras, what happens is-
The rate, the speed cameras.
The speed, the speed cameras probably operate the same way, but they're not authorized for anybody outside of the city of the first class.
Okay.
So the state has to authorize them. Uh, but red light cameras, we're authorized for red light cameras.
Okay.
But what happens is, a company comes in, puts them in, the money that's generated off them, they take their part out of it, we take our cost out of it. Anything over each part's cost goes into the grant fund, which is the A R L E. Yeah.
Okay.
Automated red light-
Arly.
System, so.
Arly Grant, yes.
Arly Grant, so that's where we dip into to get, or apply to, to get into the cameras, or the signs and all that other stuff we need. Uh, but trailers and all that is where we're descended, we only have two signs, we have both on Newtown Road, and we have one that travels, and then we have the speed detector, which is now on Centennial Road. And we have a high volume right now of, uh, traffic studies. We've done almost every road, but now everybody's asking again. Uh, we were just on Phillips, we are on Centennial, we're going to Old York.
You're on Newtown a lot too, I notice.
Oh, they're on Newtown all the time. You can't, we can't fix, it's, it's hyster, it's historical.
Yeah.
And it's conduct, Newtown, Davisville, Centennial, all these roads, I did studies, I did traffic details on these roads. We've been at them for forty years.
I think Centennial is doing much better than, than Newtown.
The only one that's not on this list that we worked consistently was Kirk and Newtown, when Kirk and Newtown-
Okay.
-went through.
Okay.
And the only reason that stopped is because the park went right across it, killed it.
Right, right, right.
But that's the only construction we've done on our road that changed anything. If anything, they did construction on Delmont Avenue ten years ago and made it an airport.
Yeah.
You could, you could land a plane on Delmont Avenue.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, you know, narrower's better, um, but with that, it brings the comfort of everybody else. So we've been working on Henry, oh, that's where our other sign is, it's down on Henry between Victoria and County Line, cause of the complaint down there. So we're trying, they're working, um, and that's where we're at.
You see the adverts, that's, that's, I just wanted to-
They're out everywhere.
That's why I wanted, I wanted to let you know, I stay in my, we're on all those roads that you're mentioning, and I think that's a good thing, I think it's a deterrent.
Yeah, Centennial just got re, redone, they re-put the lines down, so we'll be back down on now on Centennial.
Yeah.
And, um, the officer will be down there, right now Centennial's kinda slow compared to what the other six, eight months are when schools open. Especially, cause each place has a, a certain timeframe.
Yes.
The schools is anywhere between one-thirty and two-thirty, three o'clock, cause everybody, it's hard to get in, you're not gonna speed up Centennial Road at seven-thirty in the morning. Traffic's backed up, but two-thirty in the afternoon, you'll have that problem, they just unquirk.
Yeah.
And they go everywhere, so, and that's it.
Chief's got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Um, one is, I know that those red light cameras work, and I remember before I was on this board, it was met with some resistance because people don't wanna get sighted if there's not an officer there, but they do work, I know with Bustleton and, and Byberry, it, it, it's, it's, there's very few accidents there now, I mean, I'm sure there's some, uh, because it's such a busy intersection, but in, in your opinion, that these red light cameras at the major intersections like Jacksonville and Street and York Road, that'll help, not so much for revenue, but stopping, people will think twice before they start blowing through those-
Oh yeah, there's signage and all that stuff.
Right.
But, I mean, we had a real bad fatal last year at Street in York, a poor lady got killed, uh, by a guy blew, I mean, that was just horrendous if you saw the video. Um, but we can't sit on those intersections.
Exactly.
Right.
We, there's no place, unless you have a motorcycle, you're not gonna sit anywhere near those intersections.
Right.
Um, you try, you get in there, but you're not gonna sit on those types of intersections.
Well, the cameras will alleviate that.
Yeah, Norrist, yeah, Norristown in York's another one.
Yeah.
County Line in York's another one, I mean, this is the way it's coming, it's just how you man, the personnel and managing it, becomes a personnel issue on how you get to them, so right now with two, when one officer and the highway officers, we can manage all that, and then the bus, cause we'll have to have some say in the bus patrol, we'll have to click on whether or not it's a violation or not. Um, so it, it just takes time.
Well, I'm glad we could help by, um, adding a couple more officers, I mean, I know we, we, we maintained forty-four all through the financial struggles here, and now we have forty-six, so I'm glad we could help. The other question I have for you, um, I know there's a lot of people that always want trapped stop signs at, at their intersections, thinking that that's going to control calm traffic. It, it's my understanding that that really is not, does not really calm traffic.
I mean, the engineer could, I mean, people speed up-
It's not permitted by Penn Dot.
Yeah, it's not permitted, but people speed up between them, if they're used to it.
Well, yeah, if you have more stop signs, it's like South Philly often.
You just can't put them up, there's some research that has to go into it.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, I mean, it's, then it becomes a stop sign violation that we sit on.
Exactly.
Because people start blowing the stop sign, I mean, that's what happened in nineteen ninety-six when they just put up stop signs everywhere.
Yeah, I know, I, back in the early seventies, I was dating a girl from South Philly, she said, why are you going so slow? I said, because there's a stop sign thirty feet away.
Yeah.
Every, every, every intersection, there's a stop sign, you know, people waste between them.
You can hit stop signs everywhere, I mean, and it just, it gets, it gets to be, but people are, we're, people, if you know the neighborhood, you can cut through, that's the problem we're having with Phillips.
Yeah.
Cause you can get from Street and Myerne's to Lily and Bristol in five minutes if you know where you're going.
Right.
And we have a lot of people cutting through.
Yeah, Warrington, at Warrington, you can get from Bristol and Log College to Bristol, uh, Street and Valley like that, if you know where you're going.
Yes, speed up St. David's.
So the stop signs-
Right past the stop sign, where the school bus stops too, and there's, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
So the stop signs, basically, people are just gonna roll through them anyway, so they're really not-
Yeah, and there's a lot of work, I mean, there's a lot of work, you gotta prove a lot of things.
Exactly.
You gotta get a warrant for a stop sign.
Penn Dot has the requirements for that.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So you have to meet other criteria, I just did a study, actually Penn Dot did come out because it was a sight distance issue at an intersection, and it didn't warrant it, even though there was speeding, and there was volume, it wasn't until it met the, there was a lack of sight distance, so Penn Dot actually came out and did a study and warranted, but you can't put in just to control speeding.
And we've done things like, Park Avenue's a prime example, Park Street, Park County Line. We put no left turns, cause all that did was cause accidents.
Ah, yeah, that was-
Yeah, we're handling five, six accidents a day, cause people are trying to creep across four lanes of highway-
Right.
-to get whatever, and if you're on the county line roadside, that's what caused some of our fatal down there, people coming up over the hill and people trying to come across. You know, I can name three motorcycle accidents off the top of my head that that occurred.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not built for the vol, this town's not built for the volume it gets, right now.
Right, yeah, cool, thanks, thanks, Chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
See you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right. So, new business, we're gonna consider participation in the National Produce Sackler Opioid Settlement, Mr. Flagger?
Yeah, there's another settlement, there's a lot of them, you know, they, they suit every, every possible being, and, uh, the Sacklers, uh, come up with, uh, more cash and, you know, and then we get a small little piece of it. It's bill, it's billions and billions of dollars, and then it goes to the Commonwealth, the counties, and we'll get a share of it. And we're part of this anyway, we've been getting, uh, money, and this is just another, uh, more money that will come to the, to the township. So I recommend that we prove it. Otherwise we have to, otherwise we have to bring suit ourselves and get into a class action lawsuit against, uh, Big Pharma and Sack, yeah.
I have a question, where, the money that comes in from this type of grant, where, where, where does that money go?
Well, it goes to our, it's supposed to go to our expenditures in- Supposed to go to our expenditures in combating the opioid crisis. So police and emergency services, administrative services, and all the things that are involved with caring for people, um,
Okay.
in this situation.
So, once again, we don't operate the township on that money?
No, I, no, I, I understand that.
No, I understand that, I'm just, not just for you, it's for everyone.
Right.
You know, people seem, and plus, it's like a class action suit where by the time the money gets to us, it'll be about thirty-nine cents, so there's not gonna be a lot of money, but any, every little bit helps.
I was asking for their benefit, and if there was anything we were using that money for that's preventative.
Well, when we, when we applied, all the municipalities had to do an application and estimate, estimate how much each municipality spent in these pursuits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
Yeah, so we have, uh, you know, programs that the Police Department has training for, the Fire Department, uh, you know, firefighters, and so the, uh, when they ask us what we spend it on, that's what we tell them.
So motion, I'm sorry, so motion is in order.
I'll ask for a motion to, uh, consider the participation in the National Produce Sackler Opioid Settlement.
Motion.
Second? Any other questions or comments from the board, from the public? All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero, thank you. All right, Thomas, what you got?
Uh, one brief thing I wanna bring to the board's attention, uh, we have a report from, uh, Joe Velton, the Emergency Management Office, uh, for June. One of the lines in there regards the calls, uh, year to date, so half the year. The Fire Department, emergency dispatches, five hundred and eighty-seven, that includes our firefighters, working with the volunteer firefighters, five hundred and eighty-seven in six months. EMS, uh, you know, the, the rescue squad, two thousand six hundred and forty-three. So we're looking at over thirty-two hundred in six months, called emergency dispatches, not counting the Police Department. Just fire and rescue. So, the services that Warminster Township provides and helps provide to the public, that's a big, big number. And we'll get the police one for the next meeting, for the first six months. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Tom.
Hats off to the Emergency Management people.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Flagger?
Mr. Chairman, board, have a good, enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
And as always-
We'll see you next month.
Last but not least, Mr. Cutter.
I'll get one sentence out, he's gonna start whispering, we gotta cut it off. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have our July twenty twenty-five engineers report, I'll highlight just one real important thing. Uh, Kathy, I already mentioned it, but your road program, phase one is complete, phase two will start in, uh, September most likely, and your curb ramps, uh, they started last week, uh, construction out in the field, and should be wrapped up, uh, hopefully mid to end of August. So, it's all good stuff.
All moving along, yes.
Thank you, Craig.
Everything, uh, the curb ramps, paving. Yes, well done.
I have more if you wanna ask.
Now, we, we read the report. All right, Tom, what, what announcements do you have for us?
My announcement is, uh, with the board's, uh, consent, the next meeting of this Board of Supervisors will be Thursday, August the seventh, twenty twenty-five, is that okay?
Any objections?
No objections.
Cause they put this back on the normal schedule again, okay? All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
All right, who would like to go first?
I'd be happy to.
Sure.
I wanted to piggyback off of the, prior to the library event, at the VFW from eight to twelve on Saturday, August second, there's a vendor craft event. There's also a collection of any, any unwanted household items, books, TVD, V's, VC, VHS's DVDs, clothing, anything you wanna get rid of out of your house, and then you can bring all that stuff and fill the U-Haul with that. Oh, that stuff will get sold, and the money proceeds will go to the American Red Cross and the Wounded Warriors. And then you can go shopping at the vendor craft event and spend all your money there, getting all new things. There you go, from eight to twelve, so come on out, have some fun at the VFW in Warminster. Thank you. And then go to the library.
Uh, just like, um, I say, you know, been a great summer so far, you know, the heat has been wholesome. I love the heat, I'm sorry, I'm an air conditioning person. Um, just be careful out there, the older residents in your, on your street, in your neighborhood, if, if they need water, or if their power is out, with a lot of power out, is, you know, look out for them, take care of them. Thank you, enjoy the rest of summer.
I just wanna thank you all for coming, or tuning, or those of you who are tuning in, for tuning in. And this was an awesome meeting, lots of good information, I hope you all remember if you're hot and tired to go to the library this summer, cause it's a good place to keep cool and to do cool, see cool events. Bye.
Good idea, Judy, uh, thank everyone for a very, um, informative meeting on behalf of our residents. Um, uh, everybody enjoy their summer, and please slow down, there's lots of kids out of school, especially the younger ones, they don't pay attention, so just make sure you slow down. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Kathy, so, uh, yes, let's remember that, uh, as you're, as you're doing twenty miles an hour on street road and forty miles an hour on all the side streets, that, uh, they're all your neighbors, and, um, you should definitely slow down so we don't have to, um, use our resources, our law enforcement resources to do, um, myriad traffic studies, uh, because people are just not obeying the laws, so, um, it's a safety issue, and you should, uh, have respect for your neighborhood, and, uh, just slow down a little bit, it's not getting you there any faster. So, um, yeah, summer's not over, we have a long way to go, and, um, just be mindful. All right, so, um, motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All right, thank you, everyone.